Good afternoon. During the declared emergency in the city of Toronto, Committee of Adjustment virtual public hearings are being conducted via WebEx, an online digital platform, and will be livestreamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. These measures are necessary to comply with physical distancing requirements and a provincial order that limits attendance at public gatherings. My name is Nancy Omen, and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via WebEx and who can be seen and heard are Lisa Valentini, Peter Reed, and Larry Clay. City staff will be assisting us throughout the meeting, including moderating the WebEx platform. Agents, applicants, and other interested parties participating in this virtual hearing registered in advance and will be connecting through WebEx using a compatible electronic device. Their participation will be through audio only. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is a traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and is now home to many diverse First Nations, Inuit, and Métis peoples. We acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty 13 with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections 45 and 53 of the Planning Act 1990 as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment of the city of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful nonconforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new laws. Anyone who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision for an application must submit a written request by email to the general email address for the Committee of Adjustment Toronto and East York District office. Please include your name, address, and email address. All Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab notifications and appeal updates will be sent by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body, also known as T-Lab, or in some limited circumstances to the local planning appeal tribunal, known as LPAT. Appeal instructions will be set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Participants who have registered in advance will be connected to this virtual hearing and will be muted automatically upon entry. When your item is called, each participant will be unmuted by a moderator, one person at a time. I will call each item in the order listed on the agenda. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant will proceed with his or her presentation if required, and the committee may ask questions and or take the matter directly into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee. I will comment when you are reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly, clearly state your name and address, and confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. Where required, the applicant or agent will proceed first with a presentation of the application. Then, individuals either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have completed their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will be unmuted and will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion, and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer an application if substantially revised to ensure that the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Members of staff, committee members, does anyone have an interest to declare on any of the items that are scheduled this afternoon?
No, Madam Chair.
No, seeing none. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, are you aware of any withdrawal requests or deferral requests?
No, Madam Chair, I have no requests for withdrawal or deferral.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we will start with item number 11, 561 Willard Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a detached garage to the rear of a two-story detached dwelling, and access to the garage will be from the rear public lane. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and a previous decision affecting the property. And we do have somebody who will be speaking after the agent introduces himself for the record. Is the agent on the line?
Yes, I am. Hello?
Hi, can we have your name and address for the record, please? And then, we do have somebody speaking in opposition, so I will need you to give a presentation, and you'll have five minutes after you let us know your name and address.
Through you, Madam Chair, to the agent. If there's any doc— oops, sorry, we're having technical difficulties. If there's any document that you wish to use in your presentation, just mention what it is, and we are able to share it on the YouTube feed.
Did you hear that?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
My name is Doug Norton. I represent a company called Measureate, BCIN Design Firm, and we're at 37 Bedell Crescent in Whitby, Ontario.
Okay, so I'm going to start the clock now. You have five minutes to give us a presentation, okay?
Yeah, it's—I won't need the five minutes because—
That's fine, whatever you need under five minutes.
Okay, so what we have here is a new garage replacing an existing garage. The garage is a little bit larger than the existing garage in order to accommodate garden equipment and so on, and the car. And what we're asking for is relief from the soft landscaping restriction. With the existing landscaping, which is illustrated on the site plan, we end up with 40.59% of soft landscaping, and that's what we're looking for relief from on the bylaw here. And it's just a renewal of a garage. So anyhow, unless there are any questions from the committee, that's the end of my presentation.
Okay, I think we'll hold questions until after we hear from the opposition, and then we'll have you back to speak to any of the concerns raised. Okay, is Mr. Gray, are you on the line?
I am here, yes.
Also, please, for the record, your name and address, please.
Sure, Matthew Gray, spelled M-A-T-T-H-E-W-G-R-A-Y, and my address is 558 Willard Avenue.
Okay, you have five minutes, starting now.
Sure, like Mr. Norton, I will not be long. And in fact, I'm not sure who labeled me as opposition. I am in support of my neighbor's garage. I just wanted to call to voice that, and also just raise one concern with parking in our street in general. I know that the applicant has a street permit, and I just want it to be noted that I feel maybe the applicant should be a little considerate and mindful in that parking is an issue on the street. So if they have a garage, that's great. I hope that they're able to use it, and that's all I have to say. I support their application.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Gray. Mr. Norton, you have—you have an opportunity to comment on what was just said.
I don't know that I'd have anything that would help what was said, seeing as he is actually supporting the proposal. The one thing I'll point out is that there's an existing concrete apron at the back of the property that is against the laneway, and it's proposed that remain. So that's going to help with the parking situation as well.
Okay, and I think—I think the hope is that the garage will be used by a car freeing up some parking on the street, although that's not part of the committee's discretion here. But I think that's what Mr. Gray was sort of hoping for.
My understanding is that's what the owner is going to use it for.
Okay. All right, panel members, do you have any questions of Mr. Norton?
No.
Through you, Madam Chair. We've lost—
Yes, I've—
—member Valentini, and she's going to reconnect, but in this particular item, we'll just have the three members.
We have, yeah, we still have quorum, yeah. Okay, so we've lost Lisa, and so—but we have quorum, so we can take this into committee if there are no more questions. You're muted, Mr. Clay.
Therein lies my problem. I just had a question for the agent. The interlock walkway in the back, is that existing or is that new?
That's existing.
Oh, I was—are you planning to change that at all?
No, it's going to remain.
Okay. I was just thinking that if it were new, then we could maybe address the soft landscaping issue perhaps by making that water permeable pavers, but if it's already there, I guess it's there.
It is water permeable now. It's interlocking stone.
There is a difference between regular interlocking brick and water permeable, right?
I appreciate the difference.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? And we have Ms. Valentini's with us again, so we're—oh, you're going to abstain, but she will abstain on this vote. Okay, any other questions? Mr. Reed, do you have anything to add? Okay, we'll take it into committee then. Is there any discussion?
I think this one is quite minor. I mean, the garage is only 300 square feet, so I think that's—it's smaller than a lot that we see, and it's been pretty sensitively located, I think, in line with the other garages, and much smaller than the other garages on the street. I think the one thing that gave me some comfort, too, with the differential between the soft landscaping requirements is the—the house is set docked a bit, so I think that has something to do with it, and the front yard is—is quite soft in terms of its landscaping. So I think that as a—as a whole, the site is—is performing the function of-being responsible from a rainwater runoff perspective. So I would support this, no question.
Okay, is that a motion or—
Sure, a motion to approve with no conditions.
Okay, do I have a seconder?
I'll second that.
All righty, I have a motion to approve moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Okay, the application has been approved with Ms. Valentini abstaining from the vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, the next item is item number 12, 160 Kennelworth Avenue. The purpose of the application is to construct a rear yard carport, and the access to the carport is by means of a mutual right-of-way. The committee has before it copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a staff report from forestry asking for condition number two, and correspondence in support from number 158, which is an adjacent property. If I could have the agent please identify himself for the—
Hi there, my name is Ozren Stanbok. I'm at 1410 Dupont Street. I'm the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation? No? Do any of you have any questions? No questions? Ms. Valentini, you're still checking?
Yes, thank you. Can you just speak to the variance you're questioning for the floor area of the carport you're asking for? Well, it's the only variance you're asking for, sorry. Why are you asking for more—for 53.41 meters square? Is that just so it fits in the lot? Is that to park a certain number of cars?
Yeah, it's to give more flexibility for parking of vehicles. There is actually going to—there's some motorcycles involved, so there should be space beside the car for motorcycles. There's a purpose to store a canoe off the off the underside of the ceiling, so we just try to give it a little bit more space. Also, the way the carport is accessed through the right-of-way, there is actually a very limited parking situation in the area, so basically, we wanted to give as much flexibility to be able to fit more than one vehicle potentially, or one, two small sets of vehicles.
Okay, I thank you. I noticed that part of Kennelworth sort of dead dead ends, sort of up on a higher elevation than the rest of Kennelworth, so is there—there's no street parking, I'm assuming, in that section, or very little?
Very little, very little tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? All right, we'll take it into committee. Any comments?
None for me. I found this to be pretty straightforward. It is a really unique kind of, almost like a laneway approach into the—into the house. And I just looking at the elevation drawings, it looks like it's quite tastefully done in terms of not having a huge profile, and it's open. I think visually, it actually is—is good for the setting, so I think—I'd support this application.
Any other comments, or would you like to move a motion, Mr. Clay?
Go ahead, Larry.
Sure, I'll—I'll move to approve. Subject to urban forestry, is it condition two, Chair?
Yes, it is.
Urban forestry, condition two.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? Your application has unanimously been approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Item number 13, 14 Goth Avenue. The purpose of this application is to construct a detached two-car garage to the rear of the existing three-story detached dwelling. Access to the detached garage is by way of a rear public lane. A similar proposal was considered by committee in a previous decision. Panel members, we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a covering letter from Martin Rendell, the agent, a previous decision affecting the subject property, copy of a memo from the manager development engineering. We have five photographs of the public lane and the subject property, a staff report from tree protection. We have correspondence in support from number 16, 19, and 12 Goth, so that's both adjacent properties, as well as correspondence in opposition from 705 Carlaw Avenue. If I could have the agent please identify himself for the record?
Yes, my name's Martin Rendell. My address is 35 Delver Drive, Toronto.
Okay, thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation, or would you like to go to questions?
I don't need a presentation. Questions would be good for me.
Okay. All right, who wants to start with questions, if there are any?
I've got a—I've got a question. As I understood your material, Mr. Rendell, really, there's only one new variance, and that's the setback from the laneway? Is that correct?
Yeah, just by way of background, this same identical garage was before the committee in December, but the—the notice of hearing and notice of decision did not include the setback from the lane variance. My clients went to apply for building permit. That omission was up, and we're making this fresh application, and on the advice of the Secretary Treasurer, we've included the variances that were previously approved in December, so it's complete, but that's the story behind it.
Okay, so—that seems to be the—the issue. There's a letter of opposition. I don't know if you had a chance to read that, from 705 Carlaw Avenue?
And I commented—I submitted my letter of June 1st where I commented on her objections. She seems to misunderstand the proposal. Her objections seem to relate to her impression that the garage will extend into the public lane, which of course it does not.
Okay, so that's one of the questions I was going to ask you. I mean, it's obvious to me it's not going to, but you provided materials. So will this garage be in line with some of the other garages that are currently in the laneway in terms of setback from the lot line?
It will, if you—again, in my June 1st letter, I've included photographs of the property and adjacent garages, so that lines up. And typically, in these types of lanes in Toronto, the garage door, the wall, is pretty well on the rear lot lines. It's not unusual. The—I also—you'll see it on the plans, the lane takes a curve by my client's property, so there's a one-meter setback at the south end and a .37-meter setback at the north. But yeah, the photos you have there, you can see concrete block garage to the south from the neighbor, and then, once you go further south, there are buildings right, seemingly, on the lot line.
Okay, that's—that's what I thought based on your materials, but I just wanted to clarify that because the opposition seems to—I think their concern is, is that there won't be enough room to maneuver in and out of the lane and and parking spaces, but it looks to me that there are already other garages at a similar distance away from the lot line.
That's right, and then this proposal was reviewed last fall by Transportation, who had no objections in terms of the variances, nor did they raise any issues that the operation of the lane was compromised in any way.
Okay, thank you.
I should also advise, while I've got the opportunity, my clients have been proactive and have submitted an arborist report to urban forestry and have confirmation from urban forestry in writing that they are satisfied.
Okay, are there any further questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none. All right, we'll take it into committee. Any comments?
I have a couple comments. I—I think the bulk of these variances, as we heard, have already been before the committee, and they were approved, and notwithstanding the variance—the new variance that's being requested in conjunction with the other ones that are approved, in my view, still maintains or is minor in nature. We see other garages in the neighborhood that have a similar setback, and they don't seem to be compromising the functionality of the lane, so I don't think that granting this variance will in any way impact the ability to use the lane. So I'm in favor of the application.
Okay, anyone have—
My colleagues, have any other comments?
If there's not—if no one has anything to add, then I can take a motion.
I'd agree.
I'm happy to bring the motion forward for approval, and urban forestry did request condition number two, so I think while the applicant has advised, you know, that urban forestry is fine, I still think we should impose it as a condition and let it be waived by urban forestry in the normal course. So the motion is for approval, subject to urban forestry number two.
Okay, do I have a seconder?
I'll second that, yes, please.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, including forestry condition number two, moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Reed. All in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Item number 14, 787 Indian Road. The purpose of the application is to alter the existing one-story detached dwelling by constructing a new front porch and extending the hip roof over the porch. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, supporting material from Lila Yavari, the agent, and five form letters in support, including number 785, 790, 795, and 801. If I could ask the applicants to please identify themselves, name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon. My name is George Takahashi. I'm here with my wife. We are the homeowners at 787 Indian Road.
Hi, Susan Glover-Takahashi here.
Thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation?
Not me, thanks.
Okay, do any of you have any questions of the owners? No questions?
No.
All right, we'll take it into committee for a decision. Any comments?
I'd like to say, yeah, I think the the 75% versus 33% soft landscaping, it looks huge, but I think when we're looking at the actual physical space that we're talking about, it's just—it's a question of meters, right? And I think it's where the lot line ends. So I—I think the kind of cumulative impact of this—this porch plus roof addition is—is minor, so I would support it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd agree. I think a lot of the soft landscaping issue is probably preexisting, right? Just in terms of the size of the lot, and just looking around on the remainder of that street, this is the most modest house on that street, and I don't think the addition as proposed would in any way affect the remaining houses on the lot or on the street, so very much in keeping with the profile of that neighborhood, so I think it's supportable as well.
I agree with those comments, and I did note that both adjacent neighbors are in support of it, so they would be the two that I think would be impacted if there is any impact, and they both are on board, so I think this is a very reasonable application.
So I'd move a motion to approve, no contest.
Okay, I have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Reed. Do I have a seconder? Ms. Val— I'll second it. Okay, Ms. Valentini's seconding, so all in favor? Your application has been approved unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item is item number 15, 63 Berkeley Street. The purpose is to alter the existing three-story commercial building by enclosing the rear third-story patio, constructing a rear first-story Juliette third-story patio, constructing a rear first-story Juliet balcony, and converting the building used to residential. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, seven photographs of the front and rear of the property, a covering letter from Stephen Peack, the applicant, correspondence in support from number sixty-one, as well as sixty-five and sixty-seven Berkeley Street, so both adjacent neighbors are in support. If I could have the agent please identify himself for the record?
Hi there, my name is Stefan Peck, and I am the owner and applicant at sixty-three Berkeley.
Hi. Panel members, do you need a presentation? Do any of you have any questions of the applicant? No questions?
I just had a quick question, just more out of curiosity. This is being converted from commercial to residential. Are the other units along that row structure, commercial or residential as well?
So it's a combination. It's a combination of both residential and commercial. Our neighbor directly to the south is a commercial business, and our neighbor to the right is residential. So it's a mix of both.
So no conflict between those two uses within that kind of proximity?
I don't think so. I mean, like I said, there's a combination of residents and businesses along the street, and it's been like that for many, many years. And both our neighbors, and speaking to them, have been very supportive of our intent to convert it to residential. So no, not that I'm aware of, and there's not been any pushback.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, panel members?
No, thanks.
All right, we'll take it into committee. Any comments and a motion?
I think this is straightforward. I mean, we're talking about one parking space, and I think it's, I always kind of like to see on stretches like this with things kind of swapping back and forth between uses over time. So I can see no negative impact, and I would support this.
Okay, is that a motion?
Sure, let's put a motion to approve with no conditions.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Clay. All in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, have a good afternoon. All right, the next item is one seven zero Argyle Street. The purpose of the application is to construct a new detached garage to the rear of an existing three-story semi-detached dwelling. Access to the detached garages from a rear public lane. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. And we will have a speaker who has some concerns, so I am going to need a presentation from the agent. But let's start with the agent identifying himself for the record.
Yes, my name is Pedro Pimentel. I'm the architect and agent at one 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 Fourville Drive in Sisaga.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pimentel. You have five minutes, starting now, to give a presentation.
So the project is to remove an existing one-car garage, which is just a metal garage, into a two-parking space garage in block. We need a mini possible size for a two-car garage on the city bylaws. And we also comply with an adjustment from the transportation works that asks us to move the garage back about one meter to keep in center line of the laneway, two point five meters. And what we are asking the committee is for three minor variances. The one is very straightforward, it's only zero point eight millimeters, or meters. It's the setback acquired from the laneway. And then some encroachment on the leaves, which is also a technicality. And the landscape that we have, we have twenty-four percent, when it's required fifty percent. But I would like to clarify that the footprint of the garage only takes about forty percent of the backyard. I mean, some of the interlock paving that we are proposing, that is noticed as a soft landscape, will be used as a permissible interlock, so that might help. Also, the height, the height, we did not want to go to the maximum height, so we are only three point seven meters high, except unless the four meters is the minimum or the maximum required. So we lowered the height of the building. That's my presentation.
Okay, thank you very much. If I could have you just stand down, and we will have you back after we hear from the people who would like to express concern. If I could have those individuals identify themselves, and you'll have five minutes between the two of you, since you're listed together.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, great.
I need your name and address for the record.
Yes. So my name is Teresa D'Alessandro, and I'm here with my husband, Aldo Colangelo. We live at one six six Argyle Street. And I just want to state for the record, we had difficulty hearing the previous speaker, so there might be some repetition, I'm just not sure.
Yeah, that's okay. All right, so I'm starting, I'm starting your five minutes now, okay?
So we're not in total opposition of the build. We are in, we have several concerns with respect to the following. And the first one, we have concerns with respect to the height and the width of the current proposed build for the following reasons. Number one, because of the inclining flat roof at twelve feet six inches, it's actually going to be almost two feet higher than our current sightline of our garage, even though our garage has a peak, it's barely visible, and our eavesdrop from our garage height is ten feet eight inches. So the sightline would then, you're adding another two feet on top of that sightline. And although the peak is higher, it's not something that you can, that is problematic with the sightline. So my first question would be, you know, what would be the purpose of such a height of a garage if it's just to store two cars? The second point is that the size of the garage, not only in addition to the size of the current build of this garage, when you combine it with the huge build of the house, it completely removes our total sightline of trees and other homes in our backyard. So basically, what will happen is, what's going to remain is basically two large brick structures that we would look at. Unfortunately, we do have pictures, but we just didn't have the opportunity to prepare properly for personal reasons.
If I can quickly interject, this is like application number two. Application number one was for the huge extension of the house. The pictures would really paint a thousand words. And application, this was done already at ninety-six Gladstone with the same builder, the same owners. And we understand, everyone has a right to flip, and that's what's happening. The problem is, it's a total consolidation of the visual, and we're basically in a shoebox without the lid.
Yeah.
The pictures would show that. So it's four feet, it's three stories, four feet from our fence.
And then you add the additional.
The additional garage will completely block the corner. And again, if we're privy, which would be the normal case if COVID wasn't around, we would probably be sharing some pictures with you.
Can I?
One second, I just want to make sure you don't speak at the same time, because it's making it hard for us to hear. Yeah, because so.
I'll finish with my final point.
Okay.
So the final point is the fact that I think that, so when the plans went in for the house, we actually asked what was going to be done with the garage, and they were like, well, you know, we're not really sure, and there was no decisive decision. I think the timing of the application to go in separate from the house is what's causing us also a little bit of curiosity, because as similar as they did at ninety-six Gladstone, they did the house first and then the garage. I think that had we understood the intention of the size of the garage, I mean, this is new for us. This is not, you know, I'm not trying to play a victim, but this is new language, this is new everything for us. And we actually wanted to be, you know, respectful neighbors. So we would not have accepted, I think, as much as we did with the size of the house had we known the impact. You can imagine looking up at a, I don't even know what wall size that is. Of course, the architect will know. But we just don't understand why we have to have that kind of a height on the garage that is going to completely block, it's, we can't even mention that we're basically looking at two brick walls with the height of that garage. We understand the garage is necessary, we don't oppose the two-door garage, but we absolutely oppose the height. And in fact, I don't really know why it has to be two cars, but, you know, we have two cars, so I'm not going to.
At this point, if I can quickly just imagine, maybe just the sightline be under the ten feet eight inches.
I just want to make one comment, is that there is no variance for height.
You're kidding?
No, I'm not, I'm, I just thought I'd let you know, there's no height variance. They are actually building within the permitted height.
So then?
Okay.
I just, you know, I.
What alternatives do we have here then? I'm sure you guys are the, you guys are the builders, you guys have all the information that we don't.
Well, I just, I just want to.
The purpose of this?
Well, I know.
Yeah, okay, sorry, go ahead.
I know that you got the notice, and there are three variances. I just wanted to point out to you that there is not one for height.
Right. I know one variance was from fifty or forty percent to twenty-four. I think he's reducing to twenty-four.
That's, that's, yeah, correct. The soft landscape variance is going to twenty-four percent. And we can ask the applicant, the members may want to ask questions, we can ask him what the existing landscaping is, because sometimes.
Yes.
It could be a lot less than fifty on the existing. And then the other, the other variances are for building setback from the north rear lot line. So yeah, it's just for setback, not for height. So in, and in the first variance, they're only, it's only point zero three they are asking for from the rear lot line. But is there?
Yeah, we don't have an issue with the rear lot line. We understand, he wants to go straight to the laneway, I understand that, that's fine. The width.
I'll give you another, you know, give you thirty seconds if there's anything else you want to add, and then I'll ask the members if they have any questions of you, and then we'll ask the applicant back to.
Yes, if I can just quickly add, and it's an observation, all these homes in this area are basically semi-detached. So it's natural that the highest, the highest part of the house would be the one attached to the neighbor. This, we did a reverse, there's like a big V. So he's gone to build a three-story home on the part that's not attached to the neighbor, but on the part that's free-floating, if you wish, towards the airspace of the unattached neighbor, which is us. So it's not just a question of aesthetics, it's a question of a visual.
And my garden.
That's probably no bylaw or anything about that, I'm not sure, I'm not the expert. But I don't know if I can, if I'm explaining myself. So I can build a three-story home if it's attached to another three-story home, or a two-story home. But overlooking a patio, overlooking open airspace that, you know, is a big chunk of the property, then all of a sudden, it's, there is an issue, there's a precedent, it's a precedent on this street that we haven't noticed, and we've been here for fifteen years.
Right, okay.
You're more than welcome to visit, okay. And that's all I will say.
I'm sorry to have to cut you off, but I do understand your concerns, but we're only dealing with the variances in front of us. Let me see if the members have any questions for you.
I appreciate the time, thank you.
Okay.
Chair, can I just, just a quick question of the recent speaker? I didn't catch what your address was. Are you the house as part of the semi, or are you the one on the other side?
I'm the one on the other side.
Okay, you're one sixty-six?
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
Any other panel member have questions of the speaker? Speakers? Okay, so thank you very much for expressing your concerns, and I'll now ask Mr. Pimentel. Can you please comment on the issues that have been raised?
Yes, I'd like to start by saying that, so we are, what we have in front of us is the garage project. I know there was a lot of conversation about the additions that have been going on as a permit now, but I don't have, I don't think it's the occasion to talk about those because it was already.
Is there any way you can speak up? Because you're not coming in really clear. And also, in your comments, one of the members is asking what your existing rear yard softscape is. If you can give us that number, that'd be great.
Yeah, it's, the existing soft landscape is less than fifty percent right now, so.
Okay, do you know what it is? Do you know the exact?
About forty-nine, about forty-nine percent.
Okay.
Because it's the, it's the one-car garage that we have, right?
Right.
So by doing a two-car garage, and I would like to remind the committee that this is a two-family dwelling, so we need the two-car garage. And I went to the mini possible size interior site, size interior, so I will not be able to make it smaller, otherwise I need another variance or a mini parking spaces, right?
Okay.
The height is another issue. I mean, again, there was no variance for height. It's a flat roof. The garage of one sixty-six is the, the reach of the garage is four point two meters. So we're going to be about between three seven and four point two, so we're about half a meter lower than the pitch, the reach of the garage of one sixty-six. The garage of one sixty-six is a three-car garage, occupies nine point five meters. We only have about six meters, our garage. I really don't, in the, in terms of landscape, I don't know if you have a picture, but the whole backyard is paved, there's no soft landscape on one sixty-six Argyle. Is you?
Okay, anything else? Otherwise, I'll see if the members have some questions.
You know what, at this point, no.
Yeah, okay. Panel members, do you have any questions of Mr. Pimentel?
Hi, it's Lisa Valentini speaking. I just have a quick question. I'm assuming, since we don't have a copy of a prior variance, that the house was built without any variances? Or am I wrong about that?
There was bill variances on the GFA, but no variance on the landscape. Sorry, was that the question?
Yes, so there were prior variances on this?
Oh, yeah, the variances for was we converted a one-family dwelling into two-family dwelling by making an addition in the back of the house.
Okay, and what were the variances for? Can you?
I don't have the other.
GFA, basically, you said?
GFA, there was. There was no side yard variances, so. I don't have the other file we need, sorry, I just want the file for the garages, so.
And you decided not to go ahead with the variance for the garage and under the first application? Because of what reason?
No, basically, we were thinking just to use as a, as a path, as a path for the garages, but because of recent vandalisms and so forth, the owner decided it was better to make an enclosed garage, because there's a lot of vandalisms coming from the laneways, coming through the laneway, and his way will stop the vandalisms on the cars, the park, sorry, on the, on the parking spaces.
Members, would you like the Deputy Secretary of Treasury to email you, a member, a copy of the decision? Or would you like her to read the variances? Read the variances? Yes.
Variances, please, would be good for me.
So the decision was from July thirty-first, twenty nineteen. It was to construct a rear and side three-story addition for use as a secondary suite and a third-story addition over the existing two-story semi-detached dwelling. The depth, there is a permitted depth of seventeen meters. They were approved at nineteen point.
I'm having trouble hearing.
Sorry. They were, sorry, the maximum permitted depth was seventeen meters. They were approved at nineteen point zero three. The height of the exterior main walls permitted is seven point five. They were approved at nine point seven one meters. The maximum permitted floor space is one times the area of the lot, and they were approved at one point one seven times the area of law. at 1.17 times the area of lot. And in addition, there were changes to the main front wall of the house, and they were putting in a second suite, which is usually not permitted. And there were, it was approved on the condition that the third-floor balcony only measure three-point, oh, sorry, 6.34 meters by 1.62 meters. And on the north rear wall only of the third floor.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further questions, panel members?
Yes, I have one. To the applicant, have, you had mentioned something about pavers in the backyard and that those are being installed. Have you considered, or would you be open to installing permeable pavers over the paved portions of the backyard?
Yes, yes, already, I mentioned that.
Okay, thanks.
Any further questions, panel members? Okay, seeing none, we'll take it into committee. Discussion.
Well, I'll start. I, you know, I understand the neighbor's concern about, about height. I was just looking at the existing garage height, the one that they're planning to tear down, it's got a peaked roof. So I'm not too sure how much higher the new one would be, if at all, over the peak roof. And I think we have to acknowledge that, you know, the concerns are about height, but there is no variance request in respect of the height. So the variances that are being requested are comparatively modest, I think, to the kinds of things that we would normally see. Building on Peter's point, the, the soft landscaping is, is well below, but they are planning to put in water-permeable pavers, which should at least help the drainage in and around the backyard area. So I'm, I, I don't really see a whole lot based on the variances that are being proposed that don't fall under the category of minor.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, I would agree with Larry. But I always wish that we, we would get the full picture when an applicant comes in with especially a large addition like this, and then, a large addition last year, and then has proposed, you know, sizable garage now, just to get a, a full, complete picture. And I think it's incumbent on us to really remember the impacts on the whole lot, considering the existing building and the garage. But to Larry's point, I do think that, I mean, the first two variances are, are miniscule. I did have concerns about the, the soft yard landscaping, but I think with permeable pavers as a condition, I would support this.
Okay. I'm ready for a motion, unless Ms. Valentini has anything to add?
My assessment, I think this should have brought, been brought forward as a whole and complete application, as the addition would have been smaller, or the, the, on the addition in conjunction with the garage would have been different. This piecemeal approach, I don't think does justice to, you know, giving us a clear picture as to what exactly is going on on the property. And I do have concerns about the rear yard soft scape with or without the permeable paver, so. Myself.
Okay. Well, we're ready for a motion.
Sure, I'll put forward a motion to approve subject to the rear paved portions being installed with permeable pavers.
Water permeable pavers, or?
Water permeable pavers for the hardscape in the rear yard.
Okay. Motion to approve, including a condition to have the rear any hardscape done in water-permeable pavers, moved by Mr. Reed. Is there a seconder?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Clay, all in favor. Okay, the application is approved. Are you dissenting, Ms. Valentini?
Yes, I oppose.
Okay. Okay, the application is approved, with Ms. Valentini is opposed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is item number 17, 178 Hope Dale Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing two-story dwelling by constructing a rear deck and shed. And we have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, email correspondence from Ravine and Natural Feature Protection, a staff report from Ravine and Natural Feature Protection. Basically, they have looked at everything and are okay. They have no concerns. We also have a report from the TRCA, Toronto Region Conservation Authority, they too are satisfied. We have correspondence in opposition from 182 Hope Dale Avenue. And I would ask the agent to please identify himself for the record.
I'm Andy Trotter from AJT Design, 81 St. Clarence Avenue, Toronto.
Thank you. Panel members, do you need a presentation? Okay, we'll go straight to questions. Do you have any questions of Mr. Trotter?
No questions.
Mr. Clay, if you're talking, you're muted.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
My apologies. The, just, I just want to understand, like, the difference between what is there now versus what are you proposing?
Well, there's a duck there right now, and they're just proposing to make it a little bigger.
And there's gonna be some interlocking introduced? Or that's already existing?
That's existing.
That's existing.
Yeah.
Mr. Trotter, you've seen the, the letter in opposition. It's basically not really related to the variances, but rather construction noise.
It's all construction-related, yeah. All, my, my client, he's an accountant, he's a professional, he, he's not, he's not looking to cause trouble with his neighbors, he's certainly not oppositional. I think there's been some misunderstanding there, maybe, maybe a little bit in the past, he may have been a little, you know, a little too eager to do, get the work done. He's looking to have good neighbors.
Okay, maybe they can talk and alleviate some of the concerns. All right, panel members, any further questions? Okay, we'll take it into committee. Any comments?
Yeah, I'd, I'd say, because TRCA and Ravine is fine, I mean, for me, that's the first and most important thing in these situations. Plus, I think it's really, it's an enlargement of the deck, but more of a shuffling around of what's there. So the disturbed soil is already disturbed, and so I don't, I don't see any further impact, so I would support it.
Okay.
I, I agree. Based on the plans, it looks like the extension of the deck is going to be as far out as what's already, where an existing shed is. So there basically, to me, is no impact, further impact anyway, than what is already there.
Okay, I would agree with everything you've said, you've said. Who wants to do the honors with moving a motion?
I'll do it. Do we want to include urban forestry here as well, or just, or discard it because there's no box ticked?
This is, yeah, this is actually Ravine and TRCA, so it's different, it's okay, we don't need it.
Okay, it's just there is an urban forestry letter in this one, but.
Yeah, through you, Madam Chair, that's just to indicate that they reviewed the property and they have no conditions to add.
Excellent, thank you. So I move to approve with no conditions.
Okay, who'd like to second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to approve, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Mr. Clay, all in favor. The application has unanimously been approved.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Item number 19, 581 Shaw Street. The purpose of the application is to convert the existing two-and-a-half-story semi-detached house into a duplex by constructing a secondary suite in the basement and a front basement walkout. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations, and no further correspondence. If I could have the agent please identify himself for the record.
I'm Rodrigo Zagariz from Penguin Basements.
Okay, thank you. Oh, yeah, go ahead, your address, sure, I forgot.
906 Magnetic Drive, Toronto.
Okay, thanks. Panel members, do you need a presentation? No? Are there any questions of the speaker? I, I would just say, from what I saw, there's a lot of basement walkouts along that stretch of street, so I don't, I don't feel that this is introducing something new.
Hi, along that line, I have a question. It looks like on the plans, it says it's an existing walkout to propose second suite. Is that correct, or is it just a typo?
Yes, correct. So this was a three-step project. The underpin was done, then the walkout, and when we applied for the permit for the secondary suite, bylaws changed, so we couldn't get the secondary suite approved because of the existing walkout.
So did you install the walkout, or was the walkout pre-existing before any of the work was done?
It was with a different contract, but all permits were pulled. And after the walkout was finalized, we were hired to do the secondary suite. And we're gonna, couldn't get the permit for the interior work.
So the walkout was added?
Yes.
Okay, it's not like it was, has been there for 25 or 30 years, or something like that?
No, everything was permitted, the underpin, the walkout, everything was issued, obviously. But we couldn't get the, the permit for the last step, which is the interior.
Yeah, I understand that. Can you speak to the number of walkouts in the area? There are others, correct?
I know of one that was done by Penguin Basements as well. It was, the address is 671 Shaw Street. There are other walkouts, I, I can only speak of this one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other comments, members, questions?
No, I, yeah, this is the, the facade walkout issue that we trip over all the time. But I do, Chair, you mentioned there are a number of other walkouts in this area, so it does seem consistent with the build for this neighborhood. And it sounds like the, the proponent actually got the approval for building the walkout before the bylaw was adopted by council, so seems appropriate to allow this one to continue.
Anyone have anything to add?
Yeah, I, I agree. I think this is a common circumstance in this area, and also just from an aesthetic perspective, I think there, there's a rise in these properties on this part of Shaw from the street, and that, plus the vegetation, I think helps kind of, helps shield that proposed suite, so I think that's a positive as well.
Okay, if there are no further comments, I'll take a motion.
Sure, I'll, I'll move approval of this application. I, there's no conditions that I can see.
No, you're correct.
And so I'll just move approval.
Okay, do I have a seconder?
I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Ms. Valentini, all in favor. The application has been unanimously approved.
Thank you.
Okay. Item number 19, 96 Holborn Avenue. The purpose of this application is to alter the existing three-story detached house with an above-ground basement by constructing a rear first floor in brackets, secondary, second-story deck. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have supporting material from Amtech Engineering, which basically is showing examples in the area of minor variances that are similar, that have been approved. So they're giving us address actually on Barker, Holborn, Virginia, Gleed Mount, and Woodbine Avenue. If the agent could please give us his name and address for the record?
Hello, my name is Agostino Monteleone from Amtech Engineering, and, and our office is located at 989 Credit Suisse Road in Bonn.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Monteleone. Panel members, do you need a presentation? No? Any questions of the agent? Okay, Ms. Valentini?
I have a question.
Yep, go ahead.
Is the variance triggered, the lock coverage variance triggered by the deck? Is that how it's working?
Uh, yes, it is. It is also including the deck coverage as well, yes.
Okay, I, I don't know, I don't recall seeing that before, but maybe I'm, I'm wrong, but. I was just wondering, okay.
I think, Lisa, it might be because they're doing a concrete pad on the ground underneath it, so maybe that's the, the coverage, in terms of like non-permeable, I don't know.
I was a little, that was my only question, was why is the lock coverage going up? I noticed it's a waiver, but.
Yeah, seemed odd, I know.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
Okay, was that a question, or you're just?
I, I guess I'd just wondering, you know, can they then go on and, and use that lock coverage to expand the size of the house? I just, I'm curious, does a deck normally trigger variances for coverage?
Madam Deputy Secretary, do you want to weigh in there?
Yes, sometimes it does.
Okay. We just don't always see that, so.
No, I think it depends on the zone. And what is this zone? RS. Oh, and it's also, it's also based on a waiver.
Yeah, we.
Yes.
Ms. Valentini noted that. Uh, Mr. Clay?
This is, just, I'm just trying to, there, I'm looking at the site elevation, so this is a, while it's a first-story deck, it's actually, like, grade is, it's almost like the basement is pretty close to grade, is that the way we understand it?
Mr. Monteleone?
Yes.
Can you speak up a bit?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And just, just, just need to clarify, so the, the area below the deck, what's the surface treatment on that? Hello?
Are you there, Mr. Monteleone?
Yes, I am, can you hear me?
Did, yeah, did, no, we didn't hear you. Did you hear the question? But if you, if you gave an answer.
Yes, I did.
We did not hear you at all.
I'm sorry about that, yes, that is gonna be a proposed concrete slab on grade, below the deck.
So it's going to be concrete below the deck, and that's what's, that's what's triggering the lock coverage? The concrete? Is it?
I believe so.
Is it part of a basement? The concrete slab, or is, or is it just?
No, it's not, it's, it's part of the, there's an existing sliding door coming off of the rear of the building, off of, off the rear exterior wall, and a new slab is gonna be proposed there for, for the walkout. If you refer to drawing.
Staff is just putting a drawing up, is that the right one?
Yes, that's correct.
So I'm just curious, if you used a different surface treatment than concrete, would it trigger the lock coverage variance?
You could potentially use a permeable landscaping zone, I suppose that that could work as well, yes. I suppose that that could work as well, yes.
But you didn't...
Well, the, sorry.
No, I was just going to say, the applicant, it's a waiver, so you didn't discuss this with zoning to make sure whether you needed this or not?
We had discussions, but the intention was to proceed with the concrete slab.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Clay, go ahead.
No, I guess I'm just wondering if, you know, from an environmental perspective and a drainage perspective, if the owner is agnostic about the treatment and is open to doing something that's permeable, I wonder whether we should just suggest that or not, or is that being a little bit too interventionist?
I believe that they would be open to that, yes.
Well, then, in my view, would that then, Chair, would that remove that variance?
I'm not a zoning examiner, so I don't want to make that decision. They came in with these variances, and I, they didn't have a zoning review done, so I don't think we should be second guessing whether it should be there or not.
So, we did have a zoning review done previously. City, the city planning department contacted us, and it was in regards to variance number three. Our original request was for the size of the deck to be 14 square meters, and they asked us to reduce it to what was previously approved in the neighborhood. And that number six and number eight, Holborn Avenue, they were both at 11.05 square meters, which we documented in our letter to the city. So with that reduction, we did not have time because of COVID to get an updated zoning letter, so we simply, variances number one and two, which are included on, which are included are from the preliminary project review, from the zone examiner.
Well, Chair, in light of all this, you know, I think when we have an opportunity as a committee to encourage soft, or at least permeable pavers, as an alternative to hardscaping, I think we should take that, and I'd be prepared to move a motion that we approve this application subject to the condition that the applicant installs permeable pavers as an alternative to solid concrete.
I would second that.
Mr. Monteleone, what's the floor, like, the area of the actual deck? Like, what is it? Is it wood? Is, what is it?
Yes, the deck is going to be constructed as a, as a wood deck, yes.
Okay.
So water would infiltrate through the deck, I guess, onto the pavers, right?
That's correct.
Yeah. I think that's a reasonable outcome.
Sure.
Are there any other questions? Well, we'll take it into committee for a discussion, and, Mr. Clay, if there's, you know, after the comments, if you want to introduce those, the condition, then we'll come back to you.
Sorry, Chair, can't hear.
If, we'll see if there's any discussion, and if you want to introduce that condition as part of any motion, I'll bring it back to you.
Sure, I'll just, I'll just move the motion to approve, subject to the condition that the applicant install permeable pavers as an alternative to a concrete pad.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Ms. Valentini, did you have a comment you wanted to make, or you're okay? All right, so have a motion, yeah, go ahead.
I'm fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the application moved by Mr. Clay, seconded by Mr. Reed, to have the concrete slab under the deck made of water permeable pavers?
Yes.
Okay. So with that condition, the motion is to approve. All in favor? Okay, your application has been unanimously approved with that condition.
Thank you.
Okay, the final item today is item number 20, 23 Parkside Drive. The purpose is to convert the existing two-and-a-half-story detached house into a duplex by reconstructing the rear second-story addition and constructing a third-floor balcony above. The first dwelling unit will be located within the basement and first floor, and the second dwelling will be located within the second and third floors. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans, and elevations. We have a staff report from the supervisor, tree protection, and plan review, urban forestry. And that's it for correspondence. If I could please ask the agent or applicant to identify him or herself.
Yes, hello, good afternoon. My name is Amelia Fietzick. I am the homeowner of 23 Parkside Drive.
Okay, just as a side note, because urban forestry was not able to inspect the site due to the COVID-19 restrictions, so they're withholding comments, the committee will be looking at putting condition number two on it as part of any approval, if that's the direction we take.
Okay, thank you.
All right, panel members, do you need a presentation? No? Do you have any questions of the applicant?
I don't.
No questions? Okay.
I, just in terms of existing floor space index, do you know what your existing floor space index is, or gross floor area even?
I, this is based off of the index that I got from the city of Toronto, so I'm reading it here. The permitted, it's within the 0.69 times of the area of the lots, 163 square footage meters at the time, but now, the current one, I don't know. But I don't know what the past one was, I don't know the index calculation on that.
I'm thinking you're already over, but, anyway, I don't know where that is. Does anybody, has anybody else come across that, the site stats?
What about on the site plan?
Page, draw A1 as total GFA.
A1.
And then lot area, so I don't have a calculator, but 236 divided by 184, so...
Okay, so, oh, I see, GFA is 184.
Yeah.
And she's asking for 197.47, so it's already over.
Yeah.
It doesn't sound like you're adding much more. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, panel members? Seeing none?
Thanks.
Okay, we'll take it into committee for a discussion and a motion.
I, reviewing the plans, and the only variance in this is for the floor space index, they're requesting .84 and 197.47 meters square. From the site stats, it appears the existing house is 184.48. So really, in my view, this is just an incremental increase. It's already over the existing .69 times the area of the lot that the bylaw requires, so I think this is extremely minor in nature. I don't see there being any issue with the small addition.
Is that a motion, or...
I'm happy to turn that into a motion. I don't know if my colleagues have any comments, but I'm happy to turn that into a motion for approval, subject to urban forestry condition number two.
I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion to approve moved by Ms. Valentini, seconded by Mr. Reed, including condition from forestry number two. All in favor? Your application has been unanimously approved.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes today's meeting, so we stand adjourned at 2:47. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I need to pass our collective thanks on to staff, they're doing a great job behind the scenes.
Great, thank you. They're here, they heard you.
No problem, Larry.
Cheers, everyone.
Bye, guys.
Bye. Have a great weekend.